Invitation.
Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing on this council who are called on to lead the city. Remind us that we're servants and it's our responsibility to serve the collective good of all. Remind us that everyone in this city is our neighbor. Teach us to respect and protect even the least of those among us. Grant us your wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good. May we speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, the spirit of justice, and the spirit of love. This we pray in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Let to call our August 20th, 2020 council meeting to order. And before we go any further, we have some special business to take care of tonight. I have the honor tonight as we're in our newest council member, Mr. William Carlin. And it's a great honor, so at this time I'll ask Councillet Carlin to come forward and his family, whoever wants to join up front. For swearing in ceremonies. Try to aim toward the mic, but we have a little challenge here tonight, but. So Mr. Carlin, if you could raise your right hand, place your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of council member of this city.
The duties of council member of this city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the constitution and laws.
As well as the constitution and laws.
Of the state of Georgia.
Of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations, Mr. Carlin.
Thanks.
Councilman Carlin. And Mr. Carlin, if you will take your seat and get to work. We do thank you for joining us tonight. It is a special night and especially we have a full council. I finally had the possibility of breaking a tie vote at some point, so. I know the former mayor was always excited about that, so. But welcome, Mr. Carlin. We look forward to working with you. We're excited to have another hand on deck, so. At this time, I will have considerations to approve the agenda. I would like to add an item under new business, item C, discussion of the mask ordinance. Any other changes or revisions to the agenda, Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda where it's the afterwork, after-hours work for Northside Hospital, that should also include the emergency room expansion as well, not just the bed tower, but also the emergency room expansion.
So that's under item D.
Correct.
So B construction is for expansion of bed tower and emergency room at Northside Cherokee Hospital. Okay? Any other changes, additions? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Tolan, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Estes. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? All members voted for motion. We have no guests and visitors tonight officially on the agenda. At this time, all consideration to approve our minutes from our council meeting on August 6th. You have them in your packet. Do you have any changes or additions to those minutes? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Wilson and a second by Ms. McGrew. All in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted to approve the minutes. Under informational items, we have the pleasure once again, I have the Chief Mayorfield here to give us the July crime report, so. Welcome, Chief Mayorfield. You're becoming a habit here, so it's good to see you back again on a regular basis.
It's great to be here, Mayor and Council.
Looking dapper tonight, too, I might add.
Good evening. Thank you. Just a little uncomfortable, but okay. Starting out, this is, this is for the month of July. Starting out with our violent crime, our reportable violent crimes.
Excuse me, can you pull the mic down just a little bit, please?
Thank you. Um, as we talked about and we talk about a couple of times, we're very fortunate here that our numbers are so low that when you have a number, it makes the percentage look, look really big. For instance, and I think we spoke about this, in all of 2019, we didn't have an armed robbery in the city of Canton. That's unheard of, and I would wish we could always do that. But in 2020, up until July, we've had two armed robberies, which so that's a 200% increase. But it's, it's two robberies in seven months. I can tell you a lot of jurisdictions would be very happy with just two robberies in seven months. Of course, we would love to have none. When we talk about the violent crimes that's reportable, though, one of the areas that we are seeing an uptick in is if you'll look down at the aggravated assaults. The aggravated assault is, I, I know Mr. Carlin is very familiar, but aggravated assault is when someone uses a weapon of some sort to attempt to cause harm to someone or puts them in fear of being in harm. Aggravated battery is when they actually make contact. So aggravated assault is what we see a lot on domestic violence cases. So if you look at that, you can see that in 2019 total, if you, if you used all those categories together, firearms, knives, other dangers, there was, up until this point, there was 13. We're at 22 right now if you add all those together. That's a 69% increase in aggravated assaults. Seventeen with weapons, well, I'm sorry, with handguns or firearms, I should say. And at last year, it was at 10. So a lot of these, most of these are from family violence. They are, some of them are neighborhood disputes where someone grabs a weapon of some sort and threatens to use it. So there's, there's not a lot of prevention that we can do on that. As far as the family violence goes, we are very aggressive in how we handle family violence as far as making arrests. When a, a primary aggressor or predominant aggressor can be identified, by policy and by state law, we have to make an arrest if we can determine who started it and, and who could cause the most damage in that. We do that. We work with our court system. They have advocates that work with victims. We follow up with our detectives to work with victims to try and continue, to try and not see us at the same location, you know, that is repeated. So we're seeing that. We did see an uptick in this when the shelter in place, when people were in their residence more. Traditionally in law enforcement, we, we have always seen that during the holidays, during the Christmas and Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving holidays. When people are all in the same house though for four or five days, that generally turns into arguments and we get called, so. The, the aggravated assault is something that we are looking at. We're pulling all the cases to see is there any, anything common that we could do, but so often, it, as I said, it's a family violence or a neighborhood violence that there's no way we could have predicted to, to be there, but that is something we are looking at. Overall, our violent crime is down 53% for the year. If you go to our property crimes, our burglaries, both force and no force, are down 70% for the year. We've only had seven burglaries in this, in this year, so. Last year at this point, we were at 23 burglaries. Our larceny or theft is down 22% for the year. Our shoplifting was slightly up, but for the year, compared to Ju- July 2019, it was a 71% down. It's still about 6% up. Some of that on the shoplifting has, we have worked with the different stores, especially during the COVID, on maintaining, trying to, to not be maybe as prone to arrest on some of the, the minor things because we simply couldn't take them to the facilities, to the jails. The jails weren't really wanting to take people in during the pandemic, but that is, that is changing. But we, we are up 6%. And overall, our reportable crimes, both violent and property, are down 24%. Our total arrests are down 3%. Our traffic accidents are down 3%, I'm, I was quite surprised at that. I really would expect it to be down more because as you see, you don't see traffic, especially through the last three months, you didn't see traffic like you did. You didn't have school traffic. But it is down 3% for the year. Our calls for service are down 19%. And our citations are down 40%. I've got some numbers on COVID that our crime analyst pulled that I think kind of shows what's going on. Calls for service. A three-year average for us up until 2019 was 10,710 calls for service a year. At, so far, at this point, at July, so far, we're at 7,318. That's a 32% that we're down in calls for service for the same period last year. Same thing on the arrest for the, an average three years for us up until this point in the year is 472. And right now, we're at 251, so we're 47% decrease in arrests. And then we've talked about our violent crime is actually, is down compared to what our three-year average is. It's actually down to 50 violent crimes as to where we generally are. And then our property crimes are down 52% from where our three-year average would be. Again, these, we do believe COVID does have something to do with this. And then again, a 3% decrease in accidents, which I would have thought would have been higher, so I was kind of surprised at that. And then moving on, just a couple of little things. Read with a cop. We, you know, we've been doing it virtually. I know some of y'all tune in and all of us tune in. We have been working with Hasty to try and get back to being able to do virtual read with the cops with them. And tomorrow, we have a test system where we will have officers being able to read to the children. I don't know tomorrow, we're going to be able to do the reading. We're just testing the links that they're giving us so that we can read to different classes inside of the, of the school, so we are working to restore that with the school. And our Facebook Live will be Tuesday, the 25th at 3:00 PM. And I know, and I appreciate all the support and, and all of y'all that watch that. Mayor and Council, that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Mayorfield?
Thank you, sir.
It's a pleasure. Thanks for your great work. Ten-minute public input. We did not have anyone who signed up. We'll move on to the consent agenda. As usual, I will read the items that are on the consent agenda. If anyone would like to remove any of these items for further discussion, please let me know. Item A, approval of street acceptance for city maintenance for summer Summit View Court. Item B, approval of 471 East Meredith Street Slope Easement and Agreement. Item C, approval of memorandum, memorandum of understanding with Cherokee County in regard to Community Development Assistant Program. Approved by Atlanta Regional Commission. Item D, approval of after-hours construction work for Northside Cherokee Hospital in Batson Cook Construction. Proposed after-hours construction is for an expansion of the bed tower and the emergency room at Northside Cherokee Hospital. So those are the four items on the consent agenda tonight. Would anyone like any of those items removed for further discussion? If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion from Ms. Schmidt. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Nay. All members voted to approve. Moving on to old business, item A, discussion and possible action to award the Laurel Canyon Booster Pump Station project to Soul Construction LLC. Mr. Hatabian.
Yeah, this is the second hearing on this one. We, we advertised this, this project. Had six bidders and Soul Construction was the low bidder. This station will improve pressure in Laurel Canyon. Ultimately, it will serve, preserve a canyon ridge and as well as provide the ability to take down the Great Sky tank for maintenance.
Mr. Estes.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. Estes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. McGrew. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Hatabian? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. All members voted to approve the motion. Thank you, Mr. Hatabian.
Thank you.
Item B, discussion and possible action to approve change order number one for Black and Beach Laurel Canyon Booster Pump Station. You're up again, Mr. Hatabian.
Yeah, this is a culmination from the original project when Amos Road and Laurel Canyon was split into two projects. Essentially, we, they had to create two sets of plans, doing two sets of construction management. And this is, this is what it's going to take to finish up both projects.
Any questions or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. McGrew. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Estes. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All members voted to approve the motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item C, discussion and possible action to prove and authorize the mayor to sign service agreement with InterDev. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. You were presented at the last council meeting with a copy of the agreement. It was, you were informed that it's virtually unchanged from prior years with the slight escalation. And we'd asked council for their approval to continue that through the fiscal year 21.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Ms. Wilson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Schmidt. Any discussions or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All members voted to approve. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Item D, Mr. Ingram again, discussion and possible action to pre-resolution to authorize investment in Georgia Fund One investment pool.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We've discussed this. This is just one more opportunity, one more vehicle that the city can use to park its investments or its cash in. It offers a very liquid vehicle so that we can move assets from our demand accounts, our checking accounts, into the Georgia Fund One so we can earn a little bit more interest over what our demand accounts, so just to remind council that our demand accounts are earning under 10 basis points. Percent, whereas Georgia Fund One is not extremely high right now, but it's still around 25 basis points. So it's going to bring the city council, the city a little more interest relevant.
I was going to ask if it's increased any since our last meeting, but it's still around, around a quarter.
Unfortunately.
Awesome. Any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve authorizing investment in Georgia Fund One.
A motion from Ms. Schmidt and a second by Ms. Wilson. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. E, discussion and possible action to approve resolution for CARES Act funding.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. The CARES Act fund, Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act was approved by Congress in March. It appropriated about approximately $150 billion to states and local, local governments, of which just over about $4 billion was allocated to Georgia. In, in June, Governor Kemp approved an allocation to the local municipalities and local counties. The city of Canton was allocated right at $1.6 million to use toward eligible CARES Act funds, expend, expenditures. The way it was executed is the city received $497,000 upfront. And we're to use those on eligible expenditures, then we have to refund those back, any unused portion. After, if and after we utilize those funds, then we can start asking for the additional $1.1 million. I would like to make it known to council that we have requested reimbursement or eligibility to have $479,000 approved, so we do not have to, hopefully do not have to pay any of that back. And as soon as that is approved, we'll move forward with continuing to, to get as much of those $1.1 million to cover eligible expenditures as we can. GMA, along with the governor's office of planning and budget, has put out this resolution and asked that councils, the elected officials approve this resolution and adopt it. Attached to it is the agreement that I think that Ms., that the mayor has, in the city, has approved back to approximately two weeks, two, I'm sorry, two months ago when Governor Kemp allocated that first $479,000. So this is an emergency action item because we do have to have all of the expenditures and the paperwork done by September 1st. So if council would consider, I would ask that council consider making an emergency action item on this resolution.
And, Stringer, when do we expect to hear approval of that first 30% funding?
I'm checking multiple times during the day.
I know you are.
But really, I, I thought it was going to come across today. I did speak to a representative of DCA and he too said any minute, you know, so we're, we're anxious.
Appreciate your efforts on that.
Thank you.
Resolution, excuse me, a, a motion to approve the resolution for CARES Act funding.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Ms. Schmidt. For discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted to approve the motion. Thank you, Ms. Stringer. Moving on to new business. Item A, discussion of awarding 2020 Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, L-MIG paving project contract to Bartow Paving Company. Mr. Peppers.
Good evening. This is our funding that we received from the state of Georgia to assist with road paving projects. And we had three bidders on the proposal. The low bidder was Bartow Paving. If you'll recall, Bartow just did our Sploesse paving project and add-on fee paving project for us earlier this year. The base bid was 765, 70165. We did request that the bidders also supply bids related to two optional streets. After we had completed the Sploesse project, we recognized that there were two streets remaining in the Town Mill neighborhood which had not been top coated. And so by adding those into this project and utilizing some add-on fees, that gets us completed with Town Mill as a neighborhood. So the streets that are part of the local maintenance program this year include Great Sky Parkway from where the top coating ends right now, just past Twilight Overlook, all the way back through to the end of Great Sky Parkway as it goes into the Morning Miss Pod and becomes Green Briar, Green Briar Road. And then Mountain Laurel Walk, which circles that pod, so that completes everything in that pod and on the Parkway in Great Sky. It includes Town Mill Crossing and Town Mill Avenue, which are the two main thoroughfares in Town Mill neighborhood. It includes Academy Street and Archer Street. And Archer Street, we just did a sewer improvement project, and so this is a very timely part of that. So what we would do is we would request that council approve the L-MIG contract. These funds will not be expended before October 1. So we can approve tonight or we can approve at the first meeting in September. It's not, it's not a big deal from our perspective, but we're not going to have the work start until October 1. And the, the bid total, as I said, for Bartow Paving for the, for the initial bid is 765,70165, and then the option was 130,27335. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Peppers, so the option is for the two streets that still need to be completed in the neighborhood?
In Town Mill, that's correct.
I noticed that Bartow was the low bid on, on the L-MIG paving, but is actually the high bid on option by a little bit?
It was, and so, you know, part, part of the concern with that is since we actually had them bid on the bid streets, we do technically need to go with the low bidder on that. At the time, we didn't have the options in, so they're not guaranteed to get the options. We could just go with the low bid and not do those additional two streets in Town Mill. But then the flip side of that is when we do get ready to do those two streets in Town Mill, we will have to pay some type of, of mobilization fee to whoever we hire.
Right.
And I will say this, since Bartow did the first round of paving in Town Mill, I believe Town Mill was the neighborhood that they were a little over on the base repairs. And so, you know, we did have some savings on the initial contract with them on the Sploesse. You have to recall, some of these add-on fee streets have more base work that needs to be done than others do because they've been without that top coat for a period of time. So they're probably a little bit more knowledgeable about the streets in that particular neighborhood, just based on the fact they finished the Sploesse in there.
There's not a huge difference, but I was just wanting to point that out and confirm that you wanted approval on the bid plus option?
I think so. This, this, this pretty much gets us complete with Town Mill, except for the streets that are being developed now, which they're top coating. It gets us completed with Great Sky, except for Fountain Oak Way, which is one of the larger streets in there that has a lot of vacant lots on it. And what we've discussed at the staff level is that next year's paving list will simply not been top coated. We still have a few of those left, and we should be able to complete all of those next year. So that puts all of our streets in service with a top coat. And then, of course, developers will be handling top coats from there on out.
And by approving those funds tonight versus September, would that allow the contractor to prepare? So they can start the project earlier? Does it matter?
If it were approved tonight, it might help in scheduling so that they could get started exactly on October 1. If we delay, it might be a couple of weeks later. My guess is, based on the roads that we're talking about, it's still going to be something that'll be completed in the fall, but, you know, we just have to see how weather goes and a pandemic.
Yeah. Ms. McGrew, you have a question?
Well, I had a statement and a question. Paving is not something that the public is usually making input about unless they're coming to ask us to pave streets. The difference for the optional streets and Bartow to do it is not a large amount, and we did save money on the original work, so I think we should go ahead and approve it tonight. And this is a voting meeting, and it's not a controversial decision, but it is a decision that we could get it on the books. So I make a motion that we approve the paving project with the optional streets included as contract, and contract through Bartow using their bid.
Okay. A motion approved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Tolan. Any further questions, discussion? Mr. Estes.
Just, you, you kind of brought it up. I was going to ask the same question, looking at the backup. So the total of the bid and the option was lower for Baldwin. Is, going back to your comment, though, about the savings, so that's just not reflected here.
Well, no, the savings is from a different contract. The bottom line is, we need to go with the low bid on the actual bid.
Bid column itself.
On its own, correct.
Understood.
Other questions, discussion? So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. All members voted to approve the motion. Second item is discussion of City of Leska Water Service Request. Mr. Peppers.
So, if you'll recall, we had a conversation in the past about the City of Waleska Ridge area. Staff recommendation was, "That's fine. We're already providing water service in that area to begin with." We reported that back to Waleska, and it just kind of sat for a while. And as I explained to them, we appreciated that they contacted us by email about wanting us to take over that area, but we really needed something more formal from the city, and so, that's why we have this letter that was approved by the city council. So, in short, what they're doing is they're proposing that we take over the unincorporated area of P Ridge that is surrounded basically by our existing water service, water and sewer service. And that, in exchange, they will take over the area of Canyon Ridge. And Mr. Hatabian had mentioned earlier that, you know, Canyon Ridge could be provided water off of the pressure from the Laurel Canyon booster. What we would likely do is take a line to the property line and let Waleska handle everything in that development. It would give us another access point, basically, to their system. So, if we did have to take down the Great Sky tank, for instance, on one side of one forty, we could provide to the City of Waleska on the other side of one forty through Laurel Canyon. What we would need to do is formally accept this and agree to the terms, and then we'll have to draw up an agreement stating that change and redo the maps associated. Waleska wants this done as part of service delivery. That's kind of, this is kind of our only issue that we still have outstanding with another jurisdiction other than the county.
Mr. Pepper, did you say correctly that we would need to run an additional line to Canyon Ridge?
So, Canyon Ridge is, it backs up to Summit View Court that you approved tonight? And so, basically, we would just be tying in in that area. What we had looked at from our perspective, as long-term from Canyon Ridge, is that we would provide to the second phase of that neighborhood through Laurel Canyon. But based on pressures, the first phase would probably stay on the Waleska system. In this situation, we'll have to work something out with Waleska. It'll probably be fed through that backside.
Do you know what the approximately additional cost of tying that in or running that line?
I think we already have some line in that road anyways.
So, no additional cost to the?
Canyon Ridge will have to put that section in and connect.
So, no additional cost to the City Canton to allow City Waleska to take over Canyon Ridge?
That's correct. Because right now, what's happening is the front part of Canyon Ridge, we're buying wholesale from Waleska and then serving the individual lots inside with their water. Under this scenario, they would provide water to the entire neighborhood, but they will buy wholesale, wholesale from us both ways. Some of it will come wholesale from Great Sky for the front piece, and some of it will come wholesale from the back piece at Laurel Canyon. Does that make sense?
Not really.
Bottom line is, the residents in Canyon Ridge that have water pressure issues won't have any dealings with the City of Canton because it's not our water to begin with.
And there was some discussion that we would have to change out the meters in P Ridge area?
That'll be something that we'll have to phase in over time. And so, as I had mentioned to the city manager in Waleska, even if we come to terms and reach an agreement and sign an agreement, the agreement's probably going to have a timetable in there. They're going to have to write off accounts. We're going to have to set up accounts. It's going to take some time. And it may be that we say, "It's January one." I don't know what the date will be, but it'll have to be in the future so we can make those transitions.
Mr. Estes?
Remind me again, I remember talking about the P Ridge area had some, was going to need some upgrades. Is that correct?
So, it will in the long term. There's a lot of PVC in the area, but we have neighborhoods already in the city that are completely served with PVC. So, it's just one of those things, when there's an issue in the future, we just go in and replace it.
We don't have to?
We don't have to do anything immediately. The meters are really the only thing that would need to be done immediately because we use a different meter system than they do.
And is the orange section on the map, is that their current coverage? Waleska's?
Yes.
So, they provide water to?
So, we would be taking over the green area, and they would be taking over the yellow area.
Yellow, okay.
Mr. McGee?
Would the residents of P Ridge be incurring additional costs because the city is taking over their water from Waleska?
Our rate's actually a little cheaper than Waleska's.
Will the city, will the P Ridge residents in the long run have to pay for the meter changeout?
No, we would handle the meter changeouts on our own. As a city, we currently, if we have an old meter, we work through a process every year to replace those with newer meters anyway. So, it would just be part of our conversion.
So, the residents will not be impacted financially?
No. The only impact they're going to see is coming over. So, in the case, and we would specify this in the contract, but in this case, our residents at Canyon Ridge shouldn't have to pay a setup fee with the City of Waleska to start their account with them, and we wouldn't charge the residents in P Ridge just for an account with us.
Good. Thank you.
And do we have an official staff recommendation on this issue?
Yes, we would recommend that we make the swap.
Further questions, comments?
Do we decide this tonight?
It's up to you. I think they'll be happy that we discussed it. You know, ultimately, they'd love to have an agreement on it, and it is going to take us a little bit of time to put the agreement together.
So, tonight, you just want to motion to make draft an agreement?
I think that's appropriate. It would be a motion to get staff to? Yeah, yeah. To agree to the letter and to direct staff to draw up the agreement.
I'll make a motion to draw up the letter from Waleska Water Service.
A motion to agree to the letter and draw up a draft agreement with the City of Waleska. Second for Ms. McGee. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voted for the motion. So, we added item C, which is discussion of mask ordinances. Just want to start, full disclosure that I and I think a couple of members of council had a friend in Canton who passed away this afternoon from COVID, and it makes this discussion even more difficult. But, this past Saturday afternoon, Governor Kemp passed a new executive order, issued a new executive order that would allow cities and counties to enact or pass their own mask ordinances. It, as usual with these orders, are very complicated with lots of caveats. I did want to call council's attention to a few particular items in this order that makes it even, you know, more complicated as we're discussing this. And we added it to the agenda tonight because obviously, the order was not issued until Saturday, until after our agenda had been posted. So, that's why we're adding it tonight. But there are a couple of things. Order adds two definitions, which were not found in any previous executive orders. One is the local option face covering requirement. And this is a requirement imposed by municipal, county, or other government entity that individuals wear face masks or face coverings when not able to maintain social distancing from non-cohabitating persons that is permitted by terms of the order. And I would mention the order is forty-nine pages long. And the second definition is threshold requirement. The prevalence in a county of confirmed cases of COVID-19 over the previous fourteen days is equal to or greater than one hundred cases per one hundred thousand people, according to the Georgia Department of Public Health. And it should be noted that since the Department of Public Health updates the case numbers at 3:00 PM, the qualification of meeting this requirement might change on a daily basis. And then, the local option face covering requirement. Governor has also issued specific provisions in this order concerning local face covering requirements. According to this order, local governments may impose such as follows. Local governments which have met the threshold requirement are allowed to impose a local option face covering requirement, but are not required to do so. So, you can, but you're not required to. So, as a writing of this summary, only equipment county would fail to reach the threshold requirement of Georgia's one hundred and fifty-nine counties, though Webster County, according to DPH data, does not have enough data to meet the threshold either. So, that was last Saturday. And then, if a local government decides to impose a face covering requirement, it has to comply with the following. This is where it gets really complicated. The requirement cannot be applied to people who are eating or drinking, who have difficulty putting on, taking off a face covering without assistance, those who have a religious objection, or those who have a medical reason for not wearing a face covering. Penalties, criminal or otherwise, cannot be imposed on any private business establishment, corporation, nonprofit corporation, or organization. Maximum penalty cannot be larger than fifty dollars per offense. Enforcement can only be against individuals, but people who operate businesses and the businesses themselves can be held liable for failures of their customers to comply. Requirement cannot be enforced at any polling place. The requirement cannot be enforced against individuals on residential property. The requirement can be enforced against people on private property when the owner or occupant of the private property consents to enforce it. Such businesses, et cetera, can be required to post a reasonable public notice stating whether they consent to enforcement or does not consent to enforcement on this property. Follow me? Local governments imposing a face covering requirement must warn non-compliant individuals about the health risk of not wearing a face covering prior to issuing a citation, and shall make good faith efforts to distribute free masks to those who cannot afford a mask. If an individual is found in violation and cannot afford a mask, the local government must provide them a mask at the local government expense. Local governments have the authority to control the terms of entry onto property owned or leased by the local governments, regardless of whether the threshold requirement is met or not. The, and I may have read it, but the order also allows private businesses and private owners of private properties to opt out of the mask ordinance if it is mandated by a city or county. So, any business could opt out just by posting a notice on their door. So, those are, there are other ones, but again, you can, but you can't. In my mind, that make this, you know, order, I think useless, but I did want to call it to your attention. And we, GMA did draft two ordinances for cities and counties, or cities to consider. One is a citywide ordinance, which would address some of these issues. And then, one is an updated ordinance that would allow cities to update their mask policies in the properties or buildings that they own. So, that's what we wanted to discuss tonight. We have those two, I think we distributed those two model ordinances to you from GMA. I know there's been a lot of talk about this. Been a lot of articles in press on it. Mr. Peppers, do you have anything to add to that?
I'm just going to note that the two-week cases per a hundred thousand in Cherokee County are three seventy-two as of this afternoon. Currently, municipal court's in a little bit different position than the rest of our facilities. It's under the judicial order from the state, and as such, it requires masks in those facilities at all times. Right now, our police department and city hall staff operate with masks when they're in common areas and can't be apart from each other, or they're in meetings. We do not require them to be worn in private offices when they're by themselves. I would say the majority, the vast majority of people who are coming into city hall are wearing masks. We don't have any signs requiring them, but, you know, it's very few that don't come in with masks. The areas where we see those individuals most likely are in the utility department. And if you'll recall, that's where we did the renovation project to be able to have glass partition between our employees and the public. We have the same glass partitions upstairs in Community Development's customer service area. But most of the people who come through there are people who are coming through there multiple times for permits and things like that. And so, it's a different type of customer than we have downstairs. We, for a large part, when we have meetings, when we have people from the public that want to meet with us, we do encourage them to wear masks. We encourage all of our vendors and contractors, when they meet with us, to wear masks. So, if council would like a mask policy on our facilities, we can certainly do that. We do have a supply that if we had to give one to the public, we could, so that they could access the facility. But at this point, it hasn't really been an issue here at city hall. The theater hasn't really been open for any events, other than some small private gatherings. And from that standpoint, it's generally people from the same household.
I do, I'll recognize you in just a second, Mr. Estes. I did just also want to state for the record, the White House Task Force has recommended mandatory mask policy be implemented for the state of Georgia. But the governor has elected to issue this order instead. Personally, I believe in masks. I believe in science. And that being said, I believe this order is totally useless on a lot of reasons. I think it creates more problems than it solves in a lot of areas. I, you know, if businesses and private properties can opt out, and anyone can say, "Well, I have a religious objection," or "I have, you know, I mean, I have asthma. I wear a mask. I don't have an issue with it. I wear masks because I have asthma." And I respect my fellow citizens. But, you know, anyone can say that and, you know, not be questioned. So, I don't think that it's going to, us mandating it is not going to encourage anyone that is not wearing them now to wear them anymore. My fear is that it would only make them more defiant and less compliant and create more divisive behavior that we already have. And that's my fear with this. And it's not that I don't think that, you know, mask ordinance and mandates would help. I believe that we should have one in the state of Georgia and be consistent. And if we had one also just in the City of Canton, I know the other cities do not plan to mandate one. And the county, I haven't talked to Chairman Johnson, but I haven't heard any talk of the county mandating one. If it was a county-wide, at least, there would be, you know, strength in numbers. Because I do think you helped have a mask mandate in City of Canton, and you can go half a mile to the City of Holly Springs and not have one. Enforcement would be a nightmare for our police department, put them in positions. I also read that of all the cities in the state of Georgia that have had mask policies for the past several weeks, that there has not been one citation written since they've had these policies in place. So, I'm just bringing those points, and I'm open to whatever council wants. Those are my concerns in going through this. I totally believe it's passing the buck, and those are my personal beliefs. But I'm just stating those for the record for total disclosure, and that's all I'm going to say. Mr. Estes?
Yeah, I was going to say, this is definitely a lightning rod topic. I feel like most people are either strongly for or opposed, so I do agree with your points. And, you know, my feeling is personally, this is just another one of those, if we were to approve something like this, it's just another unenforced or unenforceable ordinance that, you know, casts up our police department and others. It's kind of like the smoking ban ordinance, you know, it's just that there's some... It's kind of like the smoking ban ordinance, you know, it's just that there's some precautions that people are going to take, and us mandating that is just, I don't think, it feels very much like overreach, and I wouldn't support that.
Ms. Schmidt?
I have a couple questions just to get on record. Mr. Peppers talked about that it hasn't really been an issue at city hall for citizens coming in. I wondered if it had been an issue at the police department when citizens come in.
Chief might talk a little bit about this. We only have limited spaces at the police department where the public's allowed to come in. Most of the interaction that we have in that building is at court, and so because of the judicial order, it's not an issue at all. If you don't have a mask, you can't come in, but the chief might speak more to that.
Right.
Yes, that's right. Our lobby is very small, and we really, we're handling a lot over the phones right now. So we don't really have that much traffic in there. And I would say that, same as Mr. Pepper said, every time I go through that lobby, if there's a citizen there, they're wearing a mask. So so far, we haven't. And as he said, we are requiring our employees to wear masks in all common areas and any area where there could be more than one employee in an office. But no, ma'am, I personally haven't seen a reason. And even in our lobby area, it just dawned on me, our people are behind the glass. So no, ma'am, I haven't seen a problem.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing, I know I've asked this question, but just so it's on record, if the city were to mandate masks in the city limits of Canton, would the schools that are in our city limits be required then to fall under that mandate and have their students wear masks?
No. The only ones that would be able to participate in that would be private daycare facilities, and they would have to elect to opt into that structure.
Thank you.
So let me restate that for anyone watching online, and anyone from the press here tonight, that the city has no control over policies of the school system. We get that all the time. I know everyone up here gets that all the time. The school system is its own separate entity, its own board who controls that, so we have no authority over the school system. So, Ms. Wilson?
Let me go first.
Ms. McGee, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Wilson. I've gotten some complaints that the farmer's market vendors are not wearing masks, and some people are not going because can't control the public going in. Masks are asked to be worn, but they're not going to go unless our vendors are wearing masks.
If I could answer that question, so if a vendor's not wearing a mask because they believe they have a health issue, the city would not be able to deny them access to be a vendor because of a pre-existing health issue. And we have tried to steer clear from asking any questions about health-related issues in the public. It's just not a good position to put the city in.
So on an application, or if a person, person A calls the city to be a vendor, and reception person says it is the city's policy that our farmer's market vendors wear a mask, will you be able to comply with that? A simple yes or no answer will solve that problem.
Well, it would solve, I mean, if they say, no, I can't comply with that.
Then we'd find a different vendor.
Not necessarily, because they could just say no because they have a health reason.
Then the only question is, can you comply with our rule? We have rules about size of tents. We have rules about what they can and cannot sell.
But I think what Mr. Pepper says is that we could not turn a vendor away if they have a health issue.
We're not asking them about their health. We're asking them if they will comply with our policy.
Mr. Dyer, do you have an opinion on that?
If the city council wanted to require vendors to wear masks, I believe you could do that. And I don't believe a vendor would be able. It's actually, I watched, I participated in a webinar today about some of these issues, and everybody's sort of assuming you can ask questions about health now, to a certain extent, to determine, you know, safety. So some of the general rules that we would think of may not apply, but if we required everybody to wear a mask, the vendors would have to wear one. So I think you could do that, if you so choose.
Okay. I guess I thought that, I mean, the other side of that is, we could do that, according to Mr. Dyer, and we could have vendors elect not to show up, and we could have no farmer's market for the people who do want to come to the farmer's market. So this is...
The other part of...
Other side of the story, so.
Well, the other part of that is, you can require somebody to wear a mask, but are they going to wear it properly? I know there are several times I go into a grocery store and the mask is down below the nose, hanging off. I think they've met the intent of the grocery store, but have they met the intent of the mask? I think you're going to put staff in the position where they're going to have to make judgment calls. Currently, my policy with staff is, if I have a staff person that were to come up to me and say they had a health-related issue, I don't think I could require them to wear a mask as the employer. But the attorney may have a different opinion on that.
Employee may get a different opinion.
I just, I read the intent of the order saying that you cannot force the average public to wear a mask if they have religious or health-related issues. I think you'd have a hard time denying a vendor access to a market. But if that's the desire of council, we can do that.
Ms. McGee?
Do we know what religions require a person to not wear a mask?
No, I think that's the issue.
Ah, thank you.
I mean, I could say my religion doesn't allow me to wear a mask, or I could create a religion, or I could say, you know, I have eczema on my ears, and it's a health reason for not wearing masks. Again, you, no one has to prove those things. Again, it's one of the issues. Ms. Wilson?
You know, I think we need to just leave it alone. I think we have sort of a herd mentality. People, if, every store I've been in, if it has a mask that says, don't come in here without a mask, I don't go in there without a mask, and I don't see many people in there. I think it was Nick who said the enforcement would be tremendous. I just don't think we ought to put that on our police department to try to enforce a policy on everybody in the city has to wear a mask. I think private businesses, if they want to have a policy where people can come in without a mask, then I won't go in, and other people won't either. It's up to them and their business. Look at us, we all have our mask. I've got mine on and off, but we're six feet apart. If you're social distance, you really don't have to wear a mask, either if it's, even if it's mandated, but we're all up here with them on. I just feel like we don't need to stir this pot. I think we're not a hotspot in Cherokee County yet. The hotspots are in Fulton, DeKalb, and Cobb counties. It's not here yet, so I think we leave it alone until it gets here, if it does.
Okay. Ms. Tull.
As the husband of a Cherokee County school teacher, I have a very strong opinion about masks. I also believe in, you know, our citizens' constitutional rights, if that's where we are. But I also believe that we should come down on the side of science. And science suggests that there is a measure of protection if you wear a mask. Now, people that, I always smirk, I guess is probably the best way of putting it, when I see somebody with a mask when it's pulled down below their nose, or even below their mouth in some cases, where they're supposed to be wearing masks until they quote-unquote get caught or called out by management. I just wanted it to be publicly known that I strongly support the wearing of masks. Not, we don't need to mandate it throughout the city. I think that's probably a bit overkill. But I would encourage, Mr. Peppers, if you would consider, I think you said there is no signage at city hall. We don't know where this is going still. I think it would probably be prudent, at least to give people that enter city hall and government facilities in Canton, a gentle reminder, if nothing else, that we encourage you to wear masks. So that's my two cents worth, and I have a lot more to say about it, but I won't say it here.
And again, I do strongly support masks too, and I think, I don't want to speak for anyone else up here, but I think we would all say that we strongly encourage everyone to wear masks. We do have, you know, two draft ordinances up here. One would be just for our city facilities, that we could mandate them for our facilities and, you know, lead by example, which I think would be a good thing to do. Like in our facilities, we do, you know, require masks. I think it also protects our employees, and we're setting a good example there if we wanted, if council wanted to go that far. Not the citywide ordinance for citizens, but when they are in city facilities, we do have that option, and we have the option of doing, you know, nothing. So, and again, if we, we don't have to do anything tonight, we always have the option of looking at this at a different time and date. But I did want to put it on the agenda tonight to discuss, because it is a topic that is being talked about. Ms. Schmidt?
I just wanted to say, I have two kids in Canton schools, Cherokee County schools in Canton, and I don't think that leading by example is stirring the pot, and I would like to mandate masks in our city buildings. Is that a motion? Are we ready for that?
Can I make one comment?
I don't think you need an ordinance to do that. I know there's a lot of rumors. I think the city council is correct. Back to the policy.
And I would like to make one clarifying comment on the farmer's market. Part of the issue with the farmer's market and the vendors and the masks is, at least in July and August, four hours outside in the heat with a mask has been the issue. Hasn't necessarily been they don't want to wear a mask. For many of them, it's just very uncomfortable to be out there in the heat for four hours in a mask. It's a little different for the shoppers, because most of the shoppers are in and out somewhat quickly. But what we can do, if council would like for us to, is we can send out an email to our vendors, strongly encouraging them to wear a mask. If they need a mask provided for them, we can provide them with a mask. And if they're unable to wear a mask, perhaps have them put a sign on their booth stating that they're not a mask booth. So that it's clear from the public when they walk by which booths have a mask and which don't.
I would say, you know, at the farmer's market, my experience is about maybe sixty percent of the, you know, shoppers there wear masks. And most of the vendors, I think maybe one or two do not wear masks, but most of the vendors that I interact with are very cautious, very conscious of health and safety. I choose the vendors and booths I go to because of that. But, I mean, you have the choice of not going to those booths that you don't feel comfortable going to, just like you have the choice of not going to the stores or going to an event, you know, at a private development that is, you know, that may not have, you know, social distancing or mask policies. Again, I strongly believe in masks, and I wish we had a mandate in the state, and I wish everyone followed it, because all the science says the states that have mask mandates have controlled the spread much more effectively. That being said, you know, individuals have to take some responsibilities on themselves too, so, and make, you know, responsible choices, and we can't mandate every action that they do. So I know it's a quandary, so, but, you know, I'm open, but you could go to, you know, if, you know, forty or fifty, half the people attending the market is not wearing a mask, and you're standing in line with that vendor that's, you know, wearing a mask, but then the person behind you in front of you is not wearing a mask, I'm not sure what good that does, but I'm just putting that out there. But I've had, been contacted by, you know, some of the same people, and it's, you know, it's...
There's also the issue of being outdoors. Makes a huge difference.
Right.
In safety, so.
And perhaps we look at it vendor to vendor. If the vendor is preparing food, you know, that's more like a restaurant at that point, you know? And restaurants are required to wear masks when servicing the public directly. Grocery stores in the state of Georgia don't have the same restrictions, so to speak, so maybe that's an option as well.
I mean, I wish everyone would, and I wish there were people out there who just were defiant about it, but there are. Mr. Estes?
I guess, you know, going down that path of, yeah, I reiterate kind of my position. I don't want to put my, too much of my bias, right? I grew up in the great state of New Hampshire where our motto is live free or die. But, you know, this is one of those things that I haven't heard citizens coming to me. You know, I represent citizens, not my personal bias. And so certainly my mind could be changed if we left here and everyone said, you know, I would like to have the council push on, you know, mask requirements more firmly. Again, I haven't had anyone request that. And, you know, again, it'd be interesting to get some feedback from abroad. Now, in fairness, this order just came out, we're representing it here, so I appreciate the kind of it being on the agenda right now. But again, my position would be is not to open it up yet if it's not an issue or a concern broadly. To Ms. Wilson's point, you know, there is, I do feel that a lot of people are following their own safety procedures. And so again, I just, I struggle with farmer's market, because then that leads to First Friday, then that leads to all this other stuff that is already outdoors, and so, but again, my position.
Schmidt?
I just wanted to go back and say that my suggestion was for the direction, if we don't need to pass an ordinance, that we just require it in our city buildings, not our city parks, because you're outside, but just in our city buildings. So is that something council can agree on tonight?
What's the, what's the enforcement? If someone didn't?
They could be allowed in the building.
What we would do is we would post, we would post signage on the building stating that masks are required. If you need a mask, we would put the number, phone number for that building, and have an access point where we could provide a mask to somebody who needed access to the building if they don't have one.
Ms. McGee?
Would you not allow them to come into the desk and receive a mask there?
Not if you don't allow them without a mask in the building.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Not if you don't allow them to come in the building without a mask, but Mr. Peppers has said we would post a point, if you need a mask, you know, call this number and we'll bring one to you.
What we would probably do in that scenario is have them come into the utility billing area. What we would probably do in that scenario is have them come into the utility billing area because that's the most segregated area that we have for customers and staff. Uh, and we could provide them a mask at one of the windows down there and then they could come in any entrance to the facility. Same thing, you know, really and truly at PD, you just have the lobby to go into the PD department. And municipal court's already signed requiring a mask.
Ms. Wilson?
But if you're in the office by yourself, you would not have to wear it.
That's correct. The only time staff, the only time staff is required to wear a mask is in the common area of the building. If they are in a meeting with other people and not speaking, you know, typically we'll take it off while we're speaking because it does get, it gets hard of hearing sometimes when everybody's wearing a mask right there to get, depending on the room.
And that would, that would work for you as well?
I think that our, is it okay? I, I think that our hands are tied. Like the mayor said, this is all we can do to lead by example. We wish that everyone would do the right thing and wear a mask. So this is what the city can do to say, we want to lead by example. This is what we wish all of you would do.
That would work for me.
And, and, you know, the, the rule, the science, you know, the, the procedures are that masks work when social distancing is not possible. So that is, you know, so that is, that works. Ms. McGrew?
The Surgeon General of the United States, the Surgeon General of the United States came out in July and said that upon further studies and data analysis, that his initial conclusion of not wearing masks was incorrect. And that the Surgeon General felt that masks were extremely important in slowing down the virus.
I agree. I agree. And, and I think Smith, Smith stated, if we could say we mandate masks, everyone has to wear one, or you serve for this consequences. If we could call the rules and shots and we could truly make one, everyone start wearing one, you know, at nine o'clock tonight. I think that could work. Now, we still have to decide we want to do that. Council would have to decide we want to do that. My fear is, I, I preface this conversation, and again, this is my, these are my opinions, is that mandating it under these conditions, my fear is that it only creates more problems than it solves. And I, I, I think it would encourage more people not to wear masks.
I think you are correct.
That's, that's my feeling and that's my fear. And I'd hate to contribute to anything that would, you know, cause further spread. I, I don't, and also if it, you know, then if our businesses who are struggling already have to say they opt in or they opt out, their own, their masks or their no mask, it's, it's, it just makes a bad situation worse. And I think the buck has been passed intentionally to put the, you know, the responsibility on local municipalities to bear the burden of these decisions. So, but. I wish we had different decisions. So, I know there'll be people out there disappointed, but when you just read the headline that cities can now mandate masks. And I, and again, I have no one contacting me personally saying, we want you to do this. I've seen stuff on Facebook. But we all know how that works. But, but as I said, we, we can decide later on as, to Mr. Estes' point. If, if, and, and again, this is the first time it's appearing on the agenda. It wasn't on the published agenda. If we do get feedback from our citizens, again, it's, it's, it's not necessarily about what we want, it's about what our citizens want. If they tell us differently, then we can make dis- different decisions going forward. Ms. Wilson?
I think I heard you correctly saying that at this point, we're not going to mandate anything. But if we do become a hotspot, then we revisit this. Is that what you just said?
Yeah, that's council's decision. It's not mine, but I, I said, we can, we can act on this at any point in the future. If, if situation changes and if our citizens come to us and say, no, we, we, we demand this or this is really our desire. So.
Right. We, we wouldn't close it out. We would leave it everything like it is now. And if it becomes an issue with other citizens and, then we would change our, the mandate.
We can.
Or change and have a mandate.
We can vote on our ordinance or revise an ordinance at any time.
Staff would recommend that if the opinion of council is to put a policy in place requiring masks in city facilities, that it be set up for ninety days and that it could be revisited within that ninety days if you need to extend it or need to remove it or change it or what have you.
Again, I think Mr. Dyer, you said we don't really need to vote on that, but just authorize staff to create a policy.
Right.
Okay. Or just a motion to allow staff to create that policy and then implement it?
I'd like to make a motion that council allows staff to create a mask policy in city buildings that require visitors to wear masks in city buildings.
I'll second that.
A motion, a second?
Are you putting a ninety day moratorium on it as Mr. Pepper suggests?
Sure. Yeah. Well, at staff's discretion. If their recommendation is ninety days and then we, and then staff revisits it and lets us know that they're going to continue it or discontinue it.
Ms. Diller, are you okay with the seconding that with the ninety day clause?
I'm sorry?
Are you okay with still seconding the motion of not eating? Questions come to Ms. Estes?
Just a quick clarification. You said that is staff's recommendation to the motion that?
Yeah, we were, our recommendation is if you're going to do that, that there be a time period on it. That way, you know, doesn't just exist forever, you know, and we can.
Revisit it in ninety days or if we need to change it, Mr. Peppers come to us and says, this is not working or this would make it work better. We can revise it.
You could say ninety days. You could say to the end of the calendar year. You, we just need to pick a date.
Ms. Wilson?
Could I just ask what is different about this than what we have now?
I think it just formalizes it.
Right now, the only policy we have is a personnel policy that relates to employees. It does not relate to the public.
Okay. So we're talking about anybody coming into City Hall?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion? Okay. Thank you. And thanks to everyone for the discussion. I know it's complicated to say the least. Mr. Peppers, your report?
Yes. Uh, the first thing I have is an update on the fire district. We talked about that earlier this week. The Board of Commissioners approved their fire rates of three point two nine two at their meeting on Monday night. And that is across the board rate for incorporated and unincorporated residents. Last year's rate was three point two six nine, so this is slightly up from that rate. Based on our initial calculations, it's going to be about a thirty thousand dollar increase in the city's contract over last year. Their proposed amendment, of course, was three point four eight three. It did include the fifteen thousand dollar Marshall credit in it. But that increase with that credit and that rate would have been about two hundred and sixty four thousand dollars to the city. So we're two hundred and thirty four thousand to the good under our current agreement. Question that I have for council is, do you want staff to sit down with our fire agreement, knowing that it might come up in the next year for some type of changes with the county and start identifying possible opportunities for an amendment to that agreement?
Ms. McGrew?
I know staff is very busy. Uh, when would you want to start looking into this? Because you would have to put it on a priority list. So where would it fall in your priorities?
It wouldn't be at the top. It'd probably be a middle priority type thing. It'd probably be finance and city manager sitting down together and looking at things and trying to figure out what the exact cost of certain services are. We'd take the average of our, of our impact fee over the last ten years, for instance. And that is an idea ballpark of what types of credits we would be looking for, for those services in the agreement. My only, my only suggestion is it's likely to come up again, so.
Right. Well, it seems that the SDS agreement caught us unawares, so I'd like to not be caught again unaware of situations. So I would like for staff to put it on a list and start, but not at the top of the list, but just, you know, get it in there.
Ms. Estes?
Yeah, I think it definitely will come up since we found out late in the process that it was kind of a contingent point on, on actually passing the millage rates. My only concern though, and, and we talked about it on Monday night, is just about, you know, not negating the hard work that was done to create a long-term proposal and agreement, given, knowing the, the value that was shifted to, to the, to the county fire services agreement. And, um, and so I think we, we need to not negate that as well, you know? Certainly there's always negotiations and give and takes, but, you know, we, we need to preserve a bit of the history there. But I agree. I think if we put it on a list, it, it's worth, it's going to come up. And so we just have to have a good understanding of our position, what we're willing to, to give up or what we really want to stick with. And that way we can share candid feedback with the, with the county.
I think, you know, I think having what is our, you know, Plan B and having options and looking at all the, you know, the financial, you know, implications, whether it does, I mean, I've seen, you know, comments from the chairman that, you know, that while they're using reserves this year, that they probably cannot sustain that for next year. So, um, we, even though we have, we have a contract that's for forty seven more years. But, uh, but we know there's some things in there that we may want to address or think about. And we know we have, you know, other options, uh, if that is a contract that at any point we wish to not pursue at any point. But, uh, I know if, is something at any point, if you want to think about if, it would help to have, you know, resurrect the Fire Services Committee for council to help with that, if you want to think about that. And let me know. I'd be happy to appoint a committee and to help think about that. I know council's busy, but whatever we can do to make sure that we are paying attention to this. And again, I think not being, Ms. McGrew said, caught off guard again. So. Okay.
We received an email, I forwarded to you earlier this week, uh, from Canton Housing Authority. They are about to come off the troubled list with HUD. But one of the issues with coming off that list was that recovery agreement should have been in place between the city and the authority early on in the process. It didn't get completed. And so they've asked that the city approve that agreement ahead of time. It's really an agreement that's signed by the mayor on behalf of the city. But given the history of the authority, I would suggest that council authorizes the mayor to be able to sign that agreement. So we've got it clearly documented in our minutes.
Yes, and, and I would feel more comfortable if council authorizes me to sign that. Mr. Dyer says, you know, it's, it's, we're very unlike most other cities in that the mayor is the only, like, one that really authorizes or has any interaction with the Canton Housing Authority, which is, is odd. But, uh, we, we certainly are excited that the housing authority is coming off the, the troubled list. And they have been working hard and we've had some discussions just, uh, the past couple of weeks about their, their plans and, and, uh, exciting, uh, plans going forward. They're working very hard. The new board has done incredible work. We're very excited about that. But this is official paperwork, but it does need to be signed. And I think it should be signed tonight. So it is sort of emergency situation. So if council is, agrees, would entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to sign that agreement?
I'd like to make a motion that that be authorized to the, the mayor to sign that agreement.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted to approve the mayor to sign the agreement for the Canton Housing Authority?
Wanted to give you an update on the license to recovery program. We had received three hundred and forty one applications. Two hundred and fifty one of those applications were approved. So about seventy four percent of the applications were approved. Of those that were not approved, it's a variety of reasons. Most of them are not locally owned businesses. They might have a corporation that's out of state or what have you. We approved forty six applications that were for waivers of fees. So that's not money we paid out, had not received yet, but waived the fee. And then we had two hundred and five applications that were approved where we actually had a payment back out to the company. The total amount of the waivers that we approved was about ninety five hundred dollars. And the total amount of the rebates we approved was a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. This particular item, the amount that we sent out in checks, we're going to have as our submission in the CARES Act as it relates to small business grants. So hopefully we'll be recouping those funds back from the state. We had a lot of hard work in this process, in this process. Finance director, assistant city manager, community development department, administrative staff working weekly, going over lists, making sure everything's done, sending out information to those businesses. And so I think it was a really great project. We really appreciate council's direction on that. The small businesses benefited, so I think that was great. It was a good use of those funds. So I did want to update you on that. The last thing I have, and I think I mentioned this in a, in a prior council meeting, where we have an application with soccer group to get a matching grant from Atlanta United. This is in the Harmon Field area. So if you're thinking about Harmon Field, there's a raised parking lot in the back and some old batting cages back there. Basically, the concept is to take the batting cages out in that raised parking lot and put in an AstroTurf mini field for soccer. The grant program is through the Arthur Blank Foundation in Atlanta United. It's a one, it's a one-to-one matching grant up to seventy five thousand dollars. So far on the match side, they've got twenty five thousand dollars in cash already committed. The match can also include in-kind services. So having discussion with them, some of the things that they had included in that initial project cost of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, included demolition of things on the site, the old batting cages. It included some upgrades to lighting in that area. The upgrades to lighting are actually covered under our CDBG grant that we just. So in talking with them, it looks like the actual dollar figure that's missing is closer to twenty five thousand. What they need is they need a letter of commitment that the city will provide up to that cash amount with the understanding that they're still pursuing corporate dollars to fill in that gap. So the most the city would be out is about twenty five thousand dollars. We wouldn't be out anything if they don't get the grant. They need a letter of commitment turned in by the middle of September. So we don't have to take action on it tonight. It's something that we first meeting in September. During that time before the meeting, we're going to be sitting down, looking at cost of lighting and demolition and seeing exactly what our in-kind part is to that. So that number may shrink. But I did want to bring you up to date on that. It would be a great project. It is a project for that particular area that would be beneficial. And at the same time, our hope is that they raise more money from the private sector so that the costs aren't. private sector so that the costs aren't, aren't coming from, from our dollars, but ultimately if we can get a soccer field over there, that's probably a good, a good recreational project for the community, so I did want to update you on that. I don't have anything else unless you have any questions for me.
Questions for Mr. Peppers? Okay, thank you, Mr. Peppers. I don't have much tonight, uh, again, I want to welcome Mr. Carlin to council and, uh, thank him for stepping up, uh, to serve. It takes a, takes a special person to, to offer their services to the public and, uh, we're glad to have you on board.
Glad to be here.
I also, um, would like to, we've had this discussion, but I would like to officially appoint you as chair of the Public Safety Committee and, uh, get you working on that. And, uh, also, uh, just mentioned the Diversity Task Force had their second meeting, uh, last week, and we actually met in person socially distanced here in the auditorium and had a wonderful meeting. I want to thank Ms. Schmidt and, and Ms. McGrew for joining us, and it's a great discussion, it was just a very motivated group, uh, and, uh, we really look forward to what they accomplish. We also had our first, um, web call this week with the Public Safety Advisory Group, um, and, uh, what a, it's outstanding, uh, group, uh, I tell you, I was, I was just so impressed with the individuals on, on that advisory group, so I wanted to commend council on their appointments. Uh, you did a, did a great job and, uh, Mr. Carlin, I will check in with you because I would like for you to appoint, uh, uh, two members to those, those committees as well. I want to thank Chief Mayor Phil for, for sitting in on the public safety call and, and his, his great work there. I think he would concur that it was a great group and, uh, highly qualified, and, uh, if you run any of them, uh, in the street, don't make any of them mad because, I tell you, they know how to use a weapon, so. But that's all I have, uh, and at this point, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss litigation and real estate.
Motion to adjourn to exec- uh, executive session, discuss real estate and litigation.
A motion and a second by Mr. Estes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted to adjourn. Thank you.